Commissioner Beeman. Commissioner Hodge.
President.
Commissioner Jefferson. Commissioner Labar.
Present.
Commissioner Machewski. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Sanders.
Present.
Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Schenk.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move into public participation. So here at working session, you get one minute to give public comment. And then if you are joining us via Zoom, you will hit star nine to raise your hand. And then you'll hit star six to unmute yourself when you've been called on. If you're here, we welcome you to the podium where we have your 60 seconds. And there's a nice little light indicator there that lets you know as your time is running out. If you would hope, if you'd like to speak more than one minute, please join us for our second meeting where you would get three minutes. Anybody want to give public comment?
We do have two hands raised on a Zoom call.
Okay.
Uh, first up is Margaret Shankler.
Okay, Margaret.
Um, hello, everybody. I just want to say thank you for having this session to explain the public safety budget. Um, I've got a lot of questions, but one in particular has to do with the surplus that the sheriff's department um, might accrue and what happens to them. Um, it looks like in 2014 that there was a special memo that allowed the sheriff's department to keep their surpluses or have them returned to them. And so I'm just wondering if that's still in effect. Why did, was the sheriff's department singled out for that? Um, and for the years that this was in practice, how much surplus was retained over those years by the sheriff's department? Um, I sent you all, um, uh, an email with links to these memos and so forth. So, um, if you, um, want to learn more about what I'm talking about, that should be either in your packet or your email. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody else?
Next up is M. Williams.
M. Williams.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I'm gonna reserve most of my comments for the three-minute session, but I did want to just provide, just in this one minute, um, 43-minute session, I'm gonna be providing some clarity in regards to some, uh, things that I saw at the last meeting, um, the meeting before last. And I just wanted to make sure that that is clarified, that I will be providing that clarity within the three minutes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
That is the last one on Zoom.
Last one on Zoom, anybody in the room? Not seen anybody? Okay, well, we are gonna move on to report of the county administrator.
No report.
Okay, that's quick. Okay, we're gonna move to a report of the Board of Commissioners Liaison.
No report.
Okay, moving on to our discussion items. So we have two today, and our first one is a report from the Wasna Health Plan. We're all very excited for this. I, I am, I'm sure. Good.
To get the technology.
All right. Hi there, I'm Jeremy Lepitas. I'm the executive director of the Wasna Health Plan. Uh, I've been the executive director for the last two and a half years. Excited to be here today to give you all an overview of the Wasna Health Plan. The Wasna Health Plan is a, a independent 501(c)(3) organization. Our mission is to help low-income individuals and uninsured individuals access high-quality health care and health-promoting services. Although we are our own independent nonprofit with our own Board of Directors, we are very closely aligned with the county and the Department of Public Health. We lease all of our employees from the Department of Public Health, and the county has been a big supporter for the Wasna Health Plan over the years. Uh, in fact, we consider ourselves to be the healthcare access arm of Wasana County's Public Health Department. So the goal of the presentation today is just to provide you an overview of the Wasana Health Plan, as well as give you some familiarity into the issues facing low-income individuals and uninsured individuals in Wasana County when they try to access healthcare. I thought the best way to do this was to walk you through a client story of the Wasana Health Plan of somebody we've helped. So I'll do, start by doing that. Then I'll talk a little bit about our impact model. I'll look at some data and talk about the broader community impact. And then I'll talk about the responses to the community, different community needs we've seen. And I'll end with the Wasana Health Plan's finances. So I want to start with our client's story. ND is an 80-year-old woman who is, uh, went to the emergency department with low back pain. She had diabetes and hypertension as well when she went to the emergency department. When she, uh, just a little more information about her, she speaks very little English. Uh, she's very low income. She's an immigrant who has been in the country less than five years. And that's important because if you've been here less than five years, uh, you're not eligible for Medicaid. When she went to the emergency department, she had no insurance. And there she was signed up for Medicaid anyways. And this is a mistake that we see often at the Health Plan. Insurance is really confusing. There's lots of difficult, complex policies, and lots of people make mistakes in this process. And the Wasana Health Plan's here to help people fix those mistakes. So what actually ended up happening was ND was afraid to get follow-up care. She was afraid that using her health insurance would affect her immigration status. And this is something that we see at the Wasana Health Plan commonly in Wasana County. It's actually an intentional effect of the anti-immigration rhetoric that we've seen over these last few years, as well as the constantly changing policies. We've been part of research that has showed the chilling effect that this has on the use of healthcare and public benefits. And the Wasana Health Plan works to counteract this, this anti-immigration rhetoric and to make Wasana County a welcoming place for immigrants and for everyone to access healthcare. So ND was afraid to get follow-up care. She wasn't getting her diabetes treated. She wasn't getting her hypertension treated. And she wasn't getting her low back pain looked at. So she thought she was probably not eligible for Medicaid. So she didn't want to use her insurance. And she tried to call the hospital that originally helped her. She tried to call the Medicaid Office, MDHHS, and they were all unable to help her and help her figure out what was going on. Because we're located across the courtyard from DHS, and because we have a pretty good relationship with them, they said, why don't you walk over to the Wasana Health Plan and see if they can help you? So she walked over to the Wasana Health Plan, and through an interpreter, we were able to understand her fear of using her health insurance and how it might impact her immigration status. This is a part of what we do at the Wasana Health Plan. We look at the whole person, and we look at every, every part of it. So we're making sure that they're getting the right health insurance, and also that they're actually gonna use that health insurance. So we worked with her, and we determined she was not actually eligible for Medicaid. And we closed her Medicaid account and got her on marketplace insurance with subsidies. That's also colloquially known as Obamacare. And we helped her make an appointment with a primary care office, and she got her medications for her diabetes, got her medications for her blood pressure. We helped her understand that using her health insurance, this health insurance which she actually qualified for, would not impact her immigration status. And we also referred her to the Michigan Immigrants Rights Coalition in case she had any issues with, uh, any immigration issues when she went to apply to become a US citizen. So the impact is ND now has insurance. She now has a primary care doctor with access to medication. She's financially protected should anything happen in the future if she need healthcare. And also her insurance is paying providers in our community to take care of her. So there's a financial reimbursement for providers there. So now I want to walk you through, uh, our impact model a little bit more. So you've seen the client's story. Uh, on the left side here, you see, we help people apply for health insurance and public benefits. We are a place where anyone can walk in, and we will find you affordable healthcare coverage. Because the Wasana Health Plan exists, we are one of the only counties in the state where you can really say that no matter who you are, you can come and get healthcare coverage. And we are the experts in health insurance and healthcare coverage, so that when other providers in the community don't know what to do, they turn to us. We also connect people, we connect people to primary care as well as mental health services. We have a collaboration and partnership with Wasana CMH, through the Public Safety and Mental Health Village. We also connect people to dental services. We're the administrators of the Wasana County Dental Fund. And we help resolve other barriers to care. If somebody experiences, if somebody has an unpaid bill, they're not gonna go to get medical care for something else that's bothering them. Or if they can't get to the doctor's office, or if they're not sure there's somebody who's gonna be there who speaks their language. So we help address not only health insurance, but also these other issues which prevent people from getting healthcare. And we're, we're accessible for walk-ins, for phone appointments. We're located, uh, in the 555 Toward Building, right next to Public Health, across the way from Wasana CMH. And we focus on the whole person, getting the whole story, so we can make sure we're connecting with them to build relationships so that they trust us, and so we make sure we can actually get them the right health insurance. From an impact standpoint, an individual level, we're, we're getting more people in the county to have insurance, healthier residents, better financial stability. And then from a community perspective, we're bringing money into the county because healthcare providers are being reimbursed for their services that they're providing. And we're also working to improve the systems that provide healthcare for low-income individuals. We have a Wasana Advisor, or WHP Advisory Board, which meets and brings together healthcare providers that serve low-income individuals to talk about policy changes or other things we can do to improve healthcare services locally. So now I want to zoom out a little, and I want to talk about the number of folks that we serve in a year. Uh, we serve about 5,500 individuals in a year. About 2,400 of them are Wasana Health Plan members. That means that they do not qualify for any other health insurance. And these are, many of them are immigrants. And then about 3,500 individuals, we help get on health insurance either through Medicaid or through Marketplace or Obamacare. Of the folks that are on the Wasana Health Plan, uh, in a year, they, they have 4,500 medical visits, over 12,000 prescriptions, and almost 700 mental health visits. And all of these preventative healthcare services, they would not have received had it not been for the Wasana Health Plan. They were not eligible for any other service, and they may have just shown up in the emergency room. In addition to all that work we do on helping people with health insurance, we also help them navigate other services. So we helped 500 people navigate healthcare. And this could be helping them with appointments, or helping them get transportation to a doctor's appointment. We helped over 200 people with billing or medical debt issues. And we helped over 700 people with issues they faced with the Department of Health and Human Services, which could be as simple sounding as changing your address, which is actually really, really hard to do. And it shouldn't be. Uh, we also helped over 450 people get on food assistance. And I also want to look at the financial impact that the Wasana Health Plan has in the county. Health insurance has been shown to improve the health of residents. It protects them from medical debt, and it's even been shown to lift people out of poverty. And this is why I'm so passionate about what we do, because giving somebody health insurance is not just helping them once. It's helping them for the rest of their life while they have health insurance. It's helping them not worry about whether they're gonna have to pay for medical care. They can get healthy, they can find a job, and do other things. It helps people get out of poverty. And so we also tried to look at, what is the financial impact the Wasana Health Plan has in the community? This is really hard to estimate, but we looked at, based on the number of people that we get health insurance, this brings in about $10.5 million to providers in the county each year. And that's a lot of money. Uh, we also, this also doesn't include, uh, the people that we help get on Medicaid, which contributes to the funding that goes directly to Wasana County CMH. All right, so now I want to talk a little bit about the WHP's responsiveness to changing community needs. Because we are a place that anybody can walk into and get healthcare, um, we often see things before larger health systems or larger providers see them, so we're able to respond quicker. Uh, when the Affordable Care Act was rolled out, we helped transition many people to Medicaid. During COVID-19, we partnered with the Public Health Department to set up pop-up testing and vaccine clinics, mainly with the Latino community. And I believe you're going to be honoring Maria Melitzer a little bit later today, and we've worked closely with her. And I believe you're going to be honoring Maria Melitzer a little bit later today, and we worked closely with her. Recently, we've been helping to connect Afghan and Ukrainian refugees with healthcare. And right now we're busy preparing for the end of the public health emergency. The public health emergency was declared in March of twenty twenty. It's a federal declaration. And at that time, they said that people cannot lose Medicaid. And that's been continuing since March of twenty twenty. We're not sure when it's going to end, but we think it's going to end pretty soon, maybe as soon as July. And what that means is that a lot of people are going to have to either renew and prove they're eligible for Medicaid again, or transition to another insurance. We've currently got a request in and looking forward to the conversation with administrator deal tomorrow about some ARPA funds to help us with this effort. There were fifty three thousand people on Medicaid in March of twenty twenty. In January of twenty twenty two, there's sixty seven thousand now. So that's, you know, not quite a fifth of the county, but getting close to it. They're on Medicaid and they're all going to have to either say that I'm still eligible for Medicaid, or they're going to have to transition to another insurance. And I just want to show you a map of what it looks like for who's on Medicaid in Washington County. So you can see the larger map there and then you can see the blobs of Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti. The darker shades of red are where the higher proportion of residents who are on Medicaid live. And you can see that on the east side of the county in Ypsilanti Township area, that's predominantly where the larger proportions of folks with Medicaid live. And this is not that surprising. This is, this are the same folks that were hardest hit by COVID disproportionately people of color. And in July of twenty twenty, when this Board of Commissioners declared racism a public health crisis. This is what racism as a public health looks like. This is what systemic racism looks like. There are black, black and Latino residents of our county are going to be kicked off of Medicaid. Thousands of people are going to lose insurance. And it's because of this bureaucratic system that we have that tries to keep people off of insurance. And this is what systemic racism looks like. It's not fancy. It's not in your face, but it is. We're going to have thousands of people disenrolled from Medicaid unless we're able to do something about it. And Washington health plan is trying to do something about it. We're trying to get the word out to residents. We want to help as many people as possible either maintain their insurance. Or transition to new insurance that they're eligible for. And frankly, we're going to need help of everybody in the county, all the providers and as much staff as we can get for. Now I want to talk a little bit about the WHP's finances. We have two point three million dollars in revenue each year. About twenty five percent of that comes from Washington County, the county indigent care funding. About twenty five percent of that is contributions from health systems. About thirty percent that comes from grants. And just to note, when I took over as executive director, we had one grant and now we have five grants. So trying to grow that. And twenty percent comes from Medicaid match funding, which is federal funding we're able to leverage through our close partnership with the Public Health Department. We have two point seven million dollars in expenses. About half of that goes towards program staff. Who are helping people navigate healthcare issues and get on health insurance. About thirty three percent goes towards paying for medical expenses for our members and about seventeen percent towards operating in county administration. And so you'll notice there's a deficit. We have about four hundred thousand dollar deficit there. This deficit began when the Affordable Care Act was rolled out, when the Washington health plan's main source of funding, which was disproportionate share hospital funding, was removed because the state said, well, everybody's going to have Medicaid now. So we're not really, we're not going to continue this funding. And at the time, the Washington health plan was preparing for this and so built up a healthy fund balance or fund reserve. And in our conversations with our four partners, the county, public health and the health systems, we said, we're, we decided we would spend down the fund reserve. Until it was time to ask for more support. And so this is what our fund reserve looks like in two thousand sixteen. It hit the high of seven point two million. And you can see that we're, we've been, we've been lowering and spending our fund reserve. And we've been trying to do this diligently and smartly. It's actually, we thought it would last until around two thousand and nineteen, but because of increased contributions from the health systems and our ability to leverage Medicaid match through the Public Health Department, we've been able to make it last a little longer. But it's not going to last that much longer. And over the next couple of years, we want to have conversations with our core partners with the county, with the two major health systems to figure out how to address the structural deficit. So I just want to say thanks to our four partners here, Washington County Government, of course, Washington Public Health probably should have been on here, Michigan Medicine and Trinity Health. And there's my contact info. Looking forward to our conversation.
All right. Well, thank you. Excellent presentation. So I'm sure there are some questions. Commissioner Shink.
Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate you coming and talking to us about all the things you do and how it intersects with poverty and intersects with the effort to, to reduce poverty for people in our county. Can you, if you haven't already, can you share this slide deck with us, please?
Yes, I believe they were shared.
Okay, sorry. I just maybe didn't notice. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'd be happy to resend also.
All right. Any other thoughts? Commissioner Morgan.
Thanks, Jeremy. No questions. I'm familiar with the program. It's great to hear the storyline approach of how somebody connects with the program and how it's helpful. I think this is an incredible program that we have in this community and we should certainly continue to do whatever we can to be supportive and helpful. And I am very glad to hear that you are looking very, very closely at how do we make sure that folks are still taken care of? As we kind of move beyond the pandemic, I think there are a lot of amazing things that were expanded and offered to individuals throughout the pandemic that frankly, I wish would continue going forward. I think it's clear that that social safety net provided by state and federal support should continue, but as we know, that it will not happen. So whatever we need to do locally. I hope that you will stay in touch with us as, as the county to help make sure that we know where we can be more helpful or where we need to be helpful if we're not. So thank you very much for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan.
I think I saw Commissioner Labar saying, maybe you're just waving at me. I don't know.
Thank you, Jer. I agree. The presentation was great. The work of the health plan is sadly necessary, but fantastic in execution. I, I guess you've, you've covered all these issues. I, I worry continually about the status of folks who don't speak English as their first language or, or, or do not speak proficient English. And I worry particularly about what you mentioned in terms of issues, immigration status and so forth. I hope you will keep us in the loop in terms of the resources needed there with those issues in particular. That's something that is certainly the case in my district on the, on the east side of Ann Arbor. Any other big issues that are floating out there that you think? I don't want to walk away from the meeting with the board having not just raised this point or said this thing. And if there's not, that's fine, but I want to make good use of your time.
Well, thank you. You know, I think with regards to the health plan. I think the public health emergency is the big thing we're preparing for currently. So we have a short term staffing need. But then, as you saw with our deficit, we also have a long term budgetary need. And I'm excited for, to talk to Commissioner or to Administrator Dale tomorrow about our ARPA request, which is joint with O C E D. Because they're in need of assistance or funds for utility assistance and rental assistance, which funds which are a part of the expanded social safety map during COVID that are running out.
All right. Other thoughts or questions? While people are thinking, I'll throw one at you. So you know, I'm a big fan of the mobile health RV, the Health Mobile. Have there been any conversations about the health plan riding along that and going and using that or the M S S I, once those are out to get people signed up?
Yep, we have had conversations about that. You know, because of the pandemic, we haven't been able to enact that, but would certainly be very interested in doing that and seeing that happen.
Okay, so there's some sort of targeted strategy being developed.
Yep, some sort of targeted strategy. You know, we would look at the map and, you know, think about where we could best be utilized.
Okay, all right.
Yep. And I think when we know more about the public health emergency, we're going to be able to know how best to use that and what message to send out when we do that.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions, Sal? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Well, Jeremy, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to hearing more from you. All right. So we are having some technical issues with our live streams on Facebook, the Washington County website and on YouTube. So the trifecta there. So we understand you can hear us, but you can't see the video or the presentation. So we're working towards a solution, but in the meantime, if you join via the Zoom link, you'll be able to see the video as well as hear the audio. So the information on how to join the Zoom link or the Zoom call is on washna.org slash webcast, or you can look on our agenda. Okay. We're going to move into our second presentation today. It's the twenty twenty two budget discussion. You know, we've been doing this every working session. This time we're taking a look at public safety and justice.
Okay. Get the presentation up. Okay. So thank you all for your time tonight as we go through a financial overview of the Public Safety and Justice Departments. We are looking at twenty twenty one actuals. Just to, for the combination of fiscal years and how budgets change throughout the year. So looking at all of public safety and justice, total revenues brought in were around sixty million dollars. Over half of that was from the sheriff's office. And then looking at the types of revenue that are brought in. Thirty five percent is departmental revenue, which is represented by the fees, services, fines, forfeitures. And then other revenues within that. A federal, state and local revenues, which would include the public safety and justice grants and local reimbursements are twenty six percent. And then taxes, which would be the sheriff's portion of the public safety and mental health millage. And then the E E C S millage are nineteen percent. And the last is twenty percent is transfers in, which is generally general fund appropriations to non-general fund programs. Switching to the expenditures, the, there were a hundred and eleven million dollars in expenditures. Again, the sheriff's office is the majority at sixty two point six million. The trial court represents about nineteen point one million. And then from there, the programs significantly decrease. Looking at the large cost centers as a whole, as we expect sixty five percent is spent on staff. Fifteen percent is on other programming and services. Fourteen percent is the cost allocation plan. And then there's a small portion of fleet and transfers out to other funds. Looking at the sheriff's department and always a lot on here. So thank you. And what we're doing is looking at how funds are used, what revenue is coming in by each program and what the expenditures are broken out as. Police services is the largest program within the sheriff's office. They're funded, that yellow bar you see in the revenue is the police services revenue. And then the remaining is funded by general fund, other general fund revenues, like general operating millage. And then some other small fines and fees. On the bottom, right, you see the contract policing, which costs sixteen point six million in twenty twenty one. And thirteen point one million of it was covered by sheriff revenue, which left a gap of three point four million. That was basically covered by the ship of the public safety and mental health. Corrections is the next largest cost center. It's funded and almost entirely by general fund, just the general fund revenues. And then the sheriff millage generated eight million dollars, which was recorded in the general fund. And then direct expenses in that org were one point eight million and then the rest covered other sheriff services. And then lastly, smaller programs from there with emergency services, administration, community corrections, et cetera. The trial court. Again, the total program is around nineteen point three million. The friend of the court, which is our child support division, is the largest single program of the trial court. And it's funded by grant revenues and general fund appropriation. The other large non-general fund program is the childcare fund, which is funded in a similar manner. Of the general fund programs, the trial court administration is the largest. And the remaining court programs are funded by court fees, a few small grants, and the rest is the general fund revenues of the generic other general fund revenues. Moving on to prosecuting attorney. Prosecuting attorney was about seven point two million dollars in twenty twenty one. The majority of these costs are staff providing criminal prosecution, conviction and integrity. And expungements, victim witness services in the general fund. And then the largest grants are again, the child support division and then our participation in SAKI, which is the sexual assault kit initiative. There is a small amount of grant funding and they're working on all their grants that we'll be seeing in the future. For district court, the total cost was six point eight million. District court is almost entirely general fund. Department revenues covered approximately twenty three percent of their expenditures. And a portion or small ones for the judges is also covered by state revenue. And then other general fund revenues cover the remaining remaining portion of expenditures. Again, the expenditures are largely staff costs and then the cost allocation plan, which is just the indirect services that support running a department in the county. For public defender, there are two primary programs. Total was five point one million. The two programs are indigent defense, which is covered by the M I D C grant, and then also juvenile defense, which is funded by general fund appropriation. Again, the majority of staff, tough staff, less staff costs, juvenile defense is about twelve percent of the total expenditures. And looking at children's services. This was four point nine million grant revenues made up two point seven million of which, and then the general fund appropriation made up two point one million to provide juvenile detention and education services. The new day treatment program that was added at fiscal year twenty two is not reflected here, but it is something else that's been invested in. And expenditures are fifty nine percent. Staff costs, programming and services are twenty one percent and cap makes up twenty percent of the budget. And lastly, there are five smaller agencies. The enhanced emergency communication services millage, which covers the enhanced nine one one communications and is funded by that millage. HIDA is the federal drug trafficking program and the county largely acts as a fiduciary for that, but it does show up in our books. And then DHS is the childcare fund placement probation and law library round out all of the public safety and justice departments. So and then I don't want to get to questions in a second, but coming up next, the next meeting will be the Health and Human Services and we'll be moving on. Due to the cancellation, now everything has been shifted back one working session. So we'll be to board priorities in August instead of July. With that. Happy to answer any questions.
I expect those questions. Maybe I expected wrong. Commissioner Shink.
So I, I don't really know all the details, but I have seen some articles, I guess, that anticipate that the fees, fines and forfeitures or features, sorry, might not be a long term funding. might not be a long-term funding option for the courts or for the sheriff's office because of their equitable, or their non-equitable impacts. Are you thinking about how that might affect budgets going forward? Or is there technical support that, that we can access around that?
I mean, I think those discussions are always ongoing as we learn about the viability of that. And any changes in fee structures, et cetera, would always impact the budget. The courts have been having fee and revenue issues for a while now, and then they were further exacerbated by COVID. So I think that is something we are hoping by looking thoroughly at revenues, we can, in the next, like in the budget process, we can get some more solid recommendations on keeping a balanced budget and having it be reasonable.
Thank you.
Other thoughts or questions? Commissioner Scott.
I have a lot of questions.
I'll do my best.
I know you will. Slide, on slide one, when it talks about revenues by department, and I'm looking at, like, it says revenue, where does the money come from? And I've got the sheriff, it might have been in a slide down, but that 30.61 million, where does that revenue come from?
Yes. That 30.61, if you go to the sheriff's slide.
Yeah.
The bars that are sheriffs, I mean, the biggest percentage is sheriff services, that's probably half of that, 30 million. And then it would be the federal, state, and local department revenues. I can, if it'd be helpful, after the meeting, send a follow-up of how that 30.6 breaks down in all of those categories, because it does kind of depend on the individual program. But it is, I mean, there are some fines and forfeitures, but it's mostly local reimbursements and then a few grants.
Okay. Next question, if I go to slide five. And I'm looking at, and I don't expect you have this answer, so this might be something you have to give back to me, too. How much is spent on criminal prosecution versus conviction integrity?
Yeah, so, um. One of the ways we've set up things currently in the general fund is all the prosecutor services are lumped together. So we can look at staff costs and look at who is assigned to which and give that as an estimate. And I'd have to talk with the prosecutor's office and making sure we have those right assignments. But currently, they're not recorded in different orgs where we can easily pull them out of the financial system. So, but we can definitely give you the staff assignment as a percentage.
Okay. And that might be it for my questions right now, but, but finding the answers to some of those things that, that I just mentioned will be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you so much for the presentation.
You're welcome. There's a lot to fit into a small amount of time.
And I appreciate it, thank you.
If you think you have other questions, we're running a little ahead of schedule, so let's let Commissioner Morgan go and feel free to jump back in.
Thank you, Chair. Those are good questions. Those were also questions that I was thinking about as well, just trying to figure out that, that 30 million. As I read through this, are we listing cap? I know what cap is, of course, it's our cost allocation plan, but how do we list that as an expenditure or, or revenue? It seems, I just understand it on the slides, because it.
Yeah. From the department perspective, cap is always an expenditure. So in this presentation, it's talked about as an expenditure solely, just to keep things clean. I think when we get to general government, it'll get a little messier as we talk about how the revenue closes.
Okay, so we listed as an expenditure.
Yes.
And that's another way of looking at that would just be sort of the cost of the infrastructure that.
Yeah. Things IT, electricity.
Okay.
The desk.
I was thinking that was the case, but just wanted to make sure that I was understanding that correctly. And then the other question I had was looking at the contract policing, and I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. So it's showing that we spend about $16.5 million a year in contract policing. But 13 million of it is paid for fees from the jurisdictions. And then about three, just under three and a half is kind of that gap that we cover with millage funds or otherwise.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and that was based on the actuals. Inside contract policing is also overtime reimbursements for special events. It's not solely PSU contracts, because those are also things we contract out. So it's not broken out in that way, but in general, the overtime reimbursements don't have the gap that PSU's have, so.
Okay, because when, I know one of the criticisms I've heard publicly about the, our budget is, is the amount of funds that go toward public safety in particular. And I, I think it's because it's really hard to explain that contract services, how much is there. It's also hard to compare to other counties in terms of what they spend, because we have this unique, pretty large amount of contract services, which I think is a positive thing for the community. I think it saves local governments' revenue, it saves us, it's a positive, I think. And I think we get some pretty accountable policing services through the work countywide, rather than each individual jurisdiction. But it is always really hard for me to explain, we don't really spend that much just in county policing. So this is helpful. I do think it's helpful breaking that out, and I appreciate you doing that. And I think my, the rest of my questions, I think will be answered in terms of just understanding that 30 million that comes in as revenue. And then thinking about what we actually spend from county general fund.
Yeah, okay. I can add that to the analysis of the other county general fund dollars that are filling in those gaps.
I think that's all I have for now. Thank you so much.
All right, Commissioner LaBar.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Actually, Commissioner Morgan, your comments made me think of something to highlight. I think the last time that the community, the sheriff's office, and the Board of Commissioners, and I'm putting the emphasis on this group, that we went through a public metric process around contract costs was either 2011 or 2012. And the reason I bring that up is because, Commissioner Morgan, you just referenced essentially that $3 million gap. And to some degree, back in 2017, when we were going forward with the public health, or excuse me, the, the mental health and public safety millage, maintaining the service provided to contracting jurisdictions at essentially the same rate was, was part of the selling point on that millage. And that, that $3 million gap there is to some degree what, what's able to cover it, because if we hadn't done that, we would have had a decreased services or increased costs to maintain the, the same service level. I think five years on now, four and a half years on, it's easy to, to forget some of that context. I also think it'd be helpful to keep in mind, as we look at the sheriff's office in particular, and maybe this is doable. The sheriff, prior to Sheriff Clayton, that sheriff's office and the, and the board did not always seat eye to eye on spending issues to, to the point where there was litigation. I think in the, in Sheriff Clayton's first term, he brought back something like $6 million into our general fund. And that, that's only relevant, because if you look at the numbers like over a 15-year period, it's going to fluctuate a lot. The, the, the final point, and I think this is for, for the nine of us really, is I have tried to grapple with, how do we respond as a policy body to what has, I think rightly happened in our society in terms of questioning about what is the proper role of policing a, a, across the board? And I, I think I said this before, but one of the nuances that gets missed in Michigan are the constitutionally mandated services. Spelling out what those are and to which degree we are meeting them, I think would be very useful for us going forward, because it's not as simple. And the other thing is, when we, when we talk about the sheriff's budget in particular, I hope we'll keep in mind for the, for Washington County context, many of the diversionary services, the, the services like reentry programs and others, many of those things that are most innovative are discretionary services that we choose to do. We choose to do them because morally they're the right thing, and, and, and the sheriff's office has worked with other groups on, on lots of those things to, to do them the right way. But we also have that ability, in part because of this overall budget structure that, that gets us there in the first place, i.e. the structural revenue and the contracting relationships. That isn't a question, that's a diatribe. I, I just say this because there are a lot of moving parts in this, in this, in this budget. And this is great data, this is a great presentation. I do think we benefit though from stretching it back even, even 20 years. The data is there, not all the context, but I would benefit from that, Chair, so, thank you, and, and thank you for letting me expand here.
It was a good diatribe. Before I go back to Commissioner Morgan, anybody that hasn't asked a question yet, we're going to repeat. Nope, okay, Commissioner Morgan, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I, I think Commissioner LaBar laid out one of the questions that's been on my mind as we go through this budget in particular, but all of the different pieces of the budget, is figuring out how do we assess the appropriate amount of money or the appropriate proportion of our county budget we should be spending in each different area? And I don't know how we answer that question. It's sort of a, here's what's always been done, and we don't really very, you know, stray far, too far from that, where it's at each year. And I think that's a question, as we think about more community engagement and feedback from the public, they're thinking, you know, they're looking at our budget and saying, you spend too much or too little in this area or that area. And honestly, I don't know how to know if that's the case or not, because we don't really have a good comparison to other communities. And we don't really have a good breakdown, because I don't know how to create that breakdown of like, breaking out costs per type of service. So like, here's, here's what's mandated, here's what we have to do, bare minimum. If we want to do only the minimum amount of service around people's safety, for example. Here are the other, really phenomenal things that we do in this community, because we believe in social justice, we believe in restorative justice, and we want to invest in things that are community focused. How do you kind of explain that or tell that story or outline that as it relates particularly to the, the public safety department, or, you know, public safety sheriff's office as a whole? I don't really know how to do that, but I want to throw that out there in case you think of something. This is your, your expertise, but, you know, this question of how do we kind of explain, here's what we spend, because we have to. Here's what we spend in these different particular service areas, because we want to and because they're good, positive things.
Yeah, um, I definitely hear you. Oh, I don't have an answer on how, what the right proportions are. But I do know that one of the things we're working on in this year of budget preparation is working with each department. A few years back, we would do, we called them mandated discretionary services inventories, where departments listed, these are the services we provided. Are they mandated? If they are, what kind of mandate is it, and how much do they cost? And we were talking about, I'm not sure the individual, for some department services got very detailed and made it a little bit hard to really follow. But looking at the programs that are offered, and are they mandated, and using policing is a really great example of what is the minimum that's required, what is contract policing, and what is it that we do? Because we think it benefits public safety, because that's the level we feel comfortable at. And just knowing that, I guess, having more intentional information on the decisions that are made, instead of it just being, well, this is how we budgeted it, and we keep budgeting the same amounts without really looking at that. So that is something we're hoping to finish this year and bring to the board as for your information to review and talk about as we build into the next year's budget development.
Thank you. No, that's helpful, and I'm glad that you're thinking in that, that same way. Is there any way we can kind of benchmark or compare what we do to other similar communities? Is that possible to say, okay, here's generally what we do, here's generally what some other similarly sized counties or similarly, counties are similar in different, different demographic or size, categories?
Yes, possibly. We'd have to look at what that would look like. It's not something we've done in the past, but if we can figure out a way to do it and without being able to, or without impacting the ability to do all of the other things. I think if that would be beneficial, we could definitely look into it and get back to you on how we might be able to do it. I do think it's probably going to involve calling communities, identifying which community, so I think it's a bigger undertaking than just doing it. But I think valuable work is worth doing, so.
So maybe it's not quite, we don't quite have the staff capacity for that at this point, but I, I understand the, the balance of those things. I'm just trying to think through, it just sort of seems like whatever we, we just say we want to spend more or less, and it's kind of a one-off here and there, as opposed to are we doing? I just don't have a good comparison, and so that's what I think about.
Yeah, I mean, definitely something to look into, at least and see if there's easy. I don't know if there's easy access to the data, but if there's a couple of communities we really think are comparable and would want to benchmark, we can definitely try and do some research on that, so.
Okay.
We can have more conversations about it, though.
Yeah, these are, please hear those more as ideas, certainly more so than, these are absolute things we have to do. But just trying to be able to communicate that message to the community of, here's what we do and why, and, and here's how we compare to others, either positively or negatively, so that they have that kind of information. It's always something I've wondered, and I feel like looking at these presentations is probably the most I've really seen us dive into the nuts and bolts of each different funding area, and so I really, really appreciate it. This is very helpful to me and hopefully to all of us. So thank you very much. Thanks, Chair.
Other thoughts or questions? Okay, well, people are thinking of one, I'll throw one to you. So along the lines, we've been having the conversation around pulling out some of the data and really making it clear where some of the money is going around the, the contract policing. Is there a way for you to pull it out, so we see how much we're subsidizing by contract?
There are estimates we have, because there are, like, some part, a portion of the public safety contract is like, us, you know, a sergeant supervising, and so we estimate how that goes. I don't know when the most recent detailed breakdown of what a PSU costs is and how much we charge, that is something that sheriff's office does typically work on. And I would anticipate is part, will be part of the discussion of the new PSU rate, but we can definitely request that and get, see what we can get around what that is, but it's mostly an estimate, that's okay.
Okay, you know, I'd appreciate it if you could try to give us an estimate.
Sure.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody? Not seeing, oh, oh, sorry, Commissioner Sheen.
I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate the graphs, I appreciate the conversation around it. It helps when, when I look at the budget, I can understand it, but it's not the same as when we really are seeing it with graphs, where they're set off against each other and shows like what portion comes from where, what portion comes from where. So that's really helpful to me. And then just talking about it a little more in kind of a story format really is also helpful for me to understand the budget better. So, thank you. I appreciate the effort you put into this.
Okay, thank you.
All right, last call, everybody. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Bar, technical difficulties been resolved? Are they able to see us? No, maybe, oh. Oh, okay, I'm going to read this note at the end of the meeting. I'm just going to pick this computer, thank you. All right, well, we're going to move on to liaison reports. Anybody have a liaison report they'd like to, like to give? No, not seeing any. Okay, I will give one now. So Youth Commission, they are continuing to work diligently on, one, their presentation to us, that's coming up soon, and also all of their action projects, so look forward to that. We had a meeting recently, I think it was last Sunday, it was another really engaging meeting. And another piece about that, they are hosting a racial equity town hall on Sunday, May 15th, from two to four at the Neutral Zone. You all probably already received an email about that, but if not, we'll make sure we get that to you, too. Really be nice for everybody to meet or. Really be nice for everybody to meet or meet again, the youth commissioners that are in your district. Okay, that's it for me for now. Items for current and future discussion? Oh, sorry.
Sorry, thank you. I want to tell everybody that the Spark Annual Meeting is on May seventeenth, and we will be unveiling the strategic plan, and it's really exciting to have worked on it, and then also, of course, I can't divulge any details, but exciting to see the growth that Spark is making in its strategic planning.
Excellent. Commissioner Beeman.
Just staying present.
Oh, Commissioner Beeman is present? I think Robert caught you when you walked in. Anybody else for liaison reports or wanting to mention that you are present? No, okay. Items for current and future discussion, if anybody have any? No, pending items, we have none. All right, well, we're going to adjourn. So before I ask for motion to adjourn, I'm going to say, to solve our streaming issues, we're going to have to try to restart the whole system. So please rejoin the Zoom call at seven PM for the Board of Commissioners meeting, and thank you for your patience. Now look for a motion to adjourn. All right, all in favor? All right, we are adjourned.